To reconvene to open session after meeting in closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body to discuss collective negotiating matters and to review the minutes of the board's executive closed session meeting held on October 13th, 2020. That is a motion. Do I hear it? The second?
Second.
And please call the roll.
Bertles.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Dallariva.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Brumbeck.
Yes.
McDoll.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
With the motion approved to reconvene to open session, Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Dallariva.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pitts.
Present.
Brumbeck.
Here.
McDoll.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Bertles.
Here.
I would like to welcome our guests and our visitors this evening. At this time, I would ask all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the October 26, 2020 agenda as it has been presented this evening.
So move.
Second.
And any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Brumbeck.
Yes.
Dallariva.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
McDoll.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Bertles.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's executive closed session meeting held on October 13th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Pitts.
Yes.
McDoll.
Yes.
Dallariva.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Brumbeck.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Bertles.
Yes. The Board of Education values hearing comments and questions from the members of our public. At the Policy Committee meet, Policy Committee meeting last week, the committee reviewed and updated its meetings procedures in accordance to Policy 2 dot 230 to ensure that community voices can continue to be heard and that fairness, respect, and appropriate public discourse can be maintained at all times. A printed copy of Policy 2, 230 was available at the sign-in table this evening. Moving forward, the board will provide the public one opportunity to address the board at each regular meeting under the recognition of visitors heading. The board president will ask those that wish to speak to state their name. Speakers will be limited to five minutes to address the board. A timer will be visible on the screens on either side of the board members. On occasion where there are many that wish to address the board, the time limit could be shortened in order to give the maximum number of people an opportunity to speak. As a reminder, District 7 and the Board of Education do not condone inappropriate or disparaging language of any kind. Speakers are asked to refrain from disclosing names of specific students or district personnel during your comments. Please under the, understand that the board will not respond to questions during the public comments, and when appropriate, the board may direct the superintendent to answer your questions as part of a district-wide communication or at a subsequent board meeting. At the conclusion of the meeting, if anyone should have new or additional questions or comments for the board, please see the board secretary, Carrie, and she will assist you. She has a form to, for you to fill out to, and then they will be submitted to the board. So we are now at the time of the meeting where we will invite those who would like to address the board to speak. Are there any community members that would like to address the board this evening? Yes, come on up to the podium and give your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hollis. This is my fourth year teaching. I teach language arts at Liberty Middle School. Before that, I was the PTO president at Woodland for three years. I also have three children that attend District 7 schools. I'm coming to you tonight as both a parent and an educator. I want you to know that while I believe a lot of other teachers and parents share my opinions, I do not presume to speak on their behalf. Tonight, I would like to address some health concerns. I hear a lot of talk at school and at board meetings regarding the mental health of our students. I am so thankful that we have these conversations. I have been so impressed with Caitlin Tally, Jana Hunt, and Nikki Zulig, and their availability and determination to help students. I am seeing administrators and teachers do the same. As we think more and more about mental health issues, I want to say that I'm concerned that I'm not hearing more conversations about the mental health of our faculty and staff. Every single thing about the way we do our jobs has changed. We are working well beyond our contract hours to meet the expectations of both administration and parents. We are often met with criticism and a growing to-do list. We are doing more and more, and yet it seems to never be enough. That takes a toll on a person's emotional health. We also spend a lot of time sharing statistics about how kids are affected by COVID, but kids are not the only ones in our building. Staff members are being exposed every day. With a classroom of 25 or more students, the risk for teachers greatly increase. There are more than 50 teachers in District 7 who are at least 50 years old. Compared to a high school senior with COVID, a person over 50 with COVID is four times as likely to be hospitalized and 10 times as likely to die. Add this to the li, add this to the list, add to this list, the number of teachers who immune system are compromised, and we are exposing too many vulnerable teachers to too much risk. To the Board of Education, I would like to say, please have conversations about the mental and physical health of your district employees. Please do not forget that while you represent students and parents, you also represent teachers and staff. We are not only putting our physical health at risk, but our mental and emotional health is suffering too. We spend a lot of our days frustrated and worn out, and that affects the caliber of education that District 7 children receive. If we are ill-trained, constantly overwhelmed, and deflated from social media rants, we will not be able to serve the students in the ways that they need us. To the staff at Hadley and administration in each building, I would like to say, please find ways to encourage and support your staff. Ask what we need to do our job successfully. Check in on your staff and really ask them how they are doing. Find ways to publicly and specifically praise those who work for you. We all know how good it feels to be seen and heard. To any parents here who are watching online, please encourage your child's teacher. Tell them you see how hard they are working. If you need to offer criticism or discuss an issue, please remember that we are real people who are doing the best we can currently, and we genuinely want to do what's right for kids. We don't, we know we don't always get it right, so being gentle goes a long way. I personally would like to thank Sarah Jaime, Hope Blythe, Gardner Holland, Cynthia Hoxsey, Sally Barkus, Justine Veeth, Dustin Davis, Bill Herman, Joseph Liskam, Dean Anderson, Chad Alexander, Kelsey Pickering, Sarah Chapman, Donell Duncan, Joanna Cook, and Jennifer Burnall. My children had an amazing first quarter. They have wonderful things to say about each of these teachers. You have been patient, flexible, understanding, and you have educated my children in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. I want you all to know that I see the work you're doing, and I'm forever grateful for it. All in all, I wanted to come here tonight to bring up an issue that I think is not being addressed enough. We need to be looking out for our staff physically, emotionally, and mentally. We are the front lines of education, and our well-being, or lack thereof, can certainly trickle down to our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? You're welcome to come up to the podium. Please say your name.
My name is Kim Ackerman. I have a junior at EHS. I have a medical issue, so I don't want to talk with that on if it's okay. So I'm coming here tonight. Personally, I don't have any problems with the teachers or staff at EHS. I've seen my son get emails back from his teachers at seven, eight o'clock at night, so I don't blame any of this situation. I think the teachers are struggling just like the parents and the students are, all trying to adapt and do more than what we're supposed to be doing. Kids are doing more than they should be doing with little work, and teachers are trying to teach with little teaching time. So I think everybody is probably equally frustrated. So, yes, while I've had three kids go through the school system, I'm not going to talk about mine that is having a horrible time or, because everybody else has already done that. So I would like to make two talking points and hope I can get through it in five minutes. I want to talk about these metrics, okay? So everything since the beginning of school has bound about metrics and the metrics number to get the kids back, and even the recent email that went out stating when we could go back in January said it was all determined on the metrics, but as asked in the last meeting, no one can tell us what these metrics are. I am really curious. Like, my son goes to the University of Illinois. They test those kids twice a week. They have on their website how many kids got tested, how many positive cases, how many recovered, and when that number got above 1.7%, they said, hey, too much. We're going to lock down for two weeks, and at two weeks, we'll reevaluate, and we'll put things back to where they were. See, I get that as a parent because I was told a number. I was told 1.7% is too much. We want to see it below 1%. So I am really curious as a board of this many educated people why we are not being able to get a number from you guys of where this is heading. But I do have some numbers I would like to talk about. The Madison County numbers. Currently in Madison County, over 98,000 people have been tested. 7,215 have been positive. That's 7.3%, okay? The, sorry, cases from zero to nine-year-olds, 238, that is 0.2%. Cases of 19, or 19 and under, 10 to 19, 726, 0.7%. Deaths under the age of 20 in Madison County, zero. Deaths under 50 in Madison County, zero. Those are metrics that I can understand, and those metrics are saying that very few kids, under 1% of children are getting COVID, and zero of them are dying. Yet we have parents out here trying to tell us that we don't care about our children and we're sentencing them to death if we send them to school for some reason. And so I would like to get to one more set of numbers, and that is the actual numbers in our school, because actually Edwardsville were, Madison County's number is 7.3%. Edwardsville's actually only 2.7% positivity, and Glen Carbon is only 2.5%. These are numbers I pulled off Madison County website today, so these are current. At EHS, now this is funny because I wanted the numbers for our hybrid students, so I called the superintendent's office today thinking, well, they'll know all three, and I won't have to make three phone calls. To my surprise, this, the superintendent's office had no idea the numbers of kids that have tested positive so far in our schools, and I found that really amazing because if we're basing all this on metrics, you would think they would have some blaring scoreboard keeping track for our students. But it took her over two hours to find that number for me, so after about an hour and a half, I thought, well, I'll just call the high school and just at least get the high school number because I want that for the meeting. Secretary of the high school had no idea. She works in the high school and could not tell me how many kids were positive in the high school this year. That is sad, people. If this is the problem and COVID metrics are the reason keeping our kids out, you would think they would at least have some kind of clue as to how many kids have it. Well, anyway, thank God, Carrie, to get back to me. And EHS has had 14 students, three staff. Liberty, four cases. Lincoln, seven cases. That is less than 1% of the student body, less than 1%. So now at U of I, 40,000 kids, they got a little alarmed when it got to 1.7. I don't know the metrics here, but we are less than 1%, okay? Now, my other talking point, oh, but I do know what our kids are getting 100%. Not getting COVID, 100% getting a subpar education because they are getting one-third of the teaching time they should be getting, actually less than one-third because those two days are shortened, okay? So my other point is, my son was a 19, uh, sorry, 2019 valedictorian. He's currently at U of I. He took all AP classes his senior year. He took so many AP classes that he is going to graduate U of I in the engineering department in three years instead of four. Now, he was able to do this because of Edwardsville School District, the reason we came here, the reason we are here, because you guys offer some great opportunities. But what about the kids taking classes now? Okay? See, my kid didn't do it because he wanted the most classes. My kid did it because, to save money. My kid was able to knock an entire year off. He's going to save over $26,000 by getting AP classes.
Your time, your five minutes is over.
I'm almost done, ma'am, and I didn't see anybody else raising hands, so just one second, real quick. So what I want to know is, for the kids right now, I just feel like the AP classes. It'll take me 30 seconds. I could already be done. So what I want to know is, the kids right now that are dropping out of AP classes and afraid to take AP classes and can't pass the AP classes because they're not getting enough teaching time, you're not only costing these kids their education, you are costing them and their parents thousands and thousands of dollars. And I also want to make note that I've been told there's only two people on this board with kids in the school district, and only one of those kids is in hybrid, and I want to know why somebody with no skin in the game and who cannot relate to us and our kids is making all the decisions for us and our children. That's all. Thank you.
I can't, but here's somebody else. I just know there's like six or 12 people who wanted to go.
Okay, who else would like to speak to the board? Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Libby Coontz. I teach eighth grade, hybrid, and remote at Liberty Middle School. I've been at Liberty for seven years. I have a bachelor's degree in mathematics and education, and I'm about to complete a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I'm a parent of an eighth grader at Lincoln, and I have two other small children who are out of school age at home. Over the last 10 weeks, I have been the remote and hybrid eighth grade math teacher. I would like to give you an idea of what it's like to do both, but also how this may change if we were to go back to full in-person instruction. First of all, I want to make something clear, needs to be clear, and alleviate some concern I have heard. The students are not getting half of an education or a third of an education. Having taught eighth grade for two years now, I can assure you that we are in exactly the same place in the curriculum that we were at this time last year. I have heard from other teachers in the grade level, in other grade levels, that they are actually ahead in their curriculum and not behind. Right now, my class is structured as a flipped classroom. Students are responsible for watching videos and completing notes on their remote days, and then we have the ability to go over those notes and begin working on homework together in class. I have found a lot of success in using this model, since it gives the students the ability to watch a lesson not once, but many times as they need to comprehend a topic being taught. In fact, the Liberty and Lincoln, in fact, when Liberty and Lincoln conducted their student survey, the students overwhelmingly preferred prerecorded lessons to live Zooms. There is actually no data out there to suggest at the middle school level that synchronous distance learning is superior to asynchronous learning. In addition to three hybrid classes this year, I am also teaching two remote classes. The remote classes have, in some ways, been less of a challenge to prepare for than the hybrid, since they are all on the same timeline all week long. With the hybrid model, I have to plan and set different due dates and schedule instruction for different times based on whether the students are blue, which is Monday and Wednesday, or gray, which is Tuesday and Thursday. I cannot Zoom with hybrid students since they, since while they may be at home during their remote days, I am instructing their counterparts for their in-person days. Essentially, I am planning eight classes where I should only be planning for five. In addition to this, my cohort teaches approximately 130 students, which means 130 different parent contacts and 130 different papers to grade. In a normal year, this number is high, but not unmanageable, but as we know, this year is not normal. I also have 60 more students than any other eighth grade teacher, my cohort does. I spend my 45-minute prep period usually just answering emails and responding to schoolagey messages. That brings me to my next point, and that is the amount of time and energy it has taken just to stay one week ahead. During a typical school year, I can tell you what I am teaching in two weeks, or three months, or even in the spring. I can usually get it down to almost the day. This year, I am going week to week. I like to post all of my assignments for the week Monday morning, allowing students the freedom to complete assignments on their own time, especially those who are remote and who may have to share devices or struggle with intermittent internet issues. In order to do this, I spend my nights and weekends not with my family, but preparing for the next week's worth of lessons. I haven't worked this hard since my first year of teaching, and even then, I wasn't creating assignments from scratch. I wasn't recording YouTube videos, and I wasn't learning a brand-new learning management system on top of it. We are building an all-new online curriculum for our students with very little training and limited access to technology. I am not standing here tonight to complain, though, and I'm sure some of you will walk away with that, though. I'm standing here tonight because I am exhausted and I am frustrated, because there's nothing, because I would like nothing more than to give you all a glimpse into what it takes to educate your children right now. The exhaustion is understandable. Teaching isn't easy. Nobody says it is, and it has never been. But the frustration that I am feeling comes from constantly being told I'm not doing enough, from having parents stand in front of you and tell you their child isn't getting a quality education. I can assure you, members of the board, they are. We are doing everything we can. We are pouring our hearts and our souls into this, our time and our energy and everything else, and these children are receiving the best possible education that we as professional educators can provide them. I am not opposed to returning to school fully in person in January. However, I don't think that enough thought has been put into what it is going to look like. While my colleagues tonight will go into greater detail regarding some of these things, I am going to tell you that the flipped classroom model in eighth grade math will be gone. We will go back to in-person teaching with only YouTube videos and Khan Academy to supplement our teaching. This will also create a difficult situation when a student or students need to quarantine. Right now, I have two students quarantining, and because of my lessons being prerecorded and the fact that I am teaching full remote, these students haven't missed a day. They haven't missed a beat. As it stands now, I could transition with minimal effort from a full remote plan, from a hybrid plan to a full remote plan with almost no notice. However, if we go back to in-person and must transition back to hybrid, that will change. We will need time to plan. We will need time to record videos and to prepare and change our schedules. It will not be something that can just happen in just a moment. I'm almost done, I'm sorry. I love my job, but this year has been hard, as well as hard on my colleagues. To echo my colleague and friend Sarah Hollis, hard does not have to be bad. My students aren't just learning math from me this year. They are learning responsibility, resilience, and work ethic. They are learning to be good communicators and how to self-advocate. We are not just teaching our curriculum, we never are, but this year, we are teaching so much more. I choose to think of 2020 as teaching us all patience, understanding, and kindness, a lesson that I believe everyone can agree is important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Boiling. I'm the parent of three kids in the district. My daughter is 12 years old and currently participating in the hybrid model. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family, as well as many other parents who are experiencing education in the hybrid setting. As we understand, only one board member has a child learning in this setting, so we are speaking to help you understand why we are passionate about increasing our children's in-school learning time. It is good to hear the different perspectives of teachers and what they go through, as well as parents and students, so we can all understand where each other are coming from. I come here tonight to simply implore you to avoid emotion, but rather just utilize the available data to make a confident decision to send our kids back to school five days a week, continuing the current mitigation strategies to shorten schedules, masks, and self-health checks. We thank you for undertaking our recommendation to survey our kids and parents, as well as teachers regarding COVID and education. While there was not an option via survey to ask us how we felt about a current return to five days a week, over 70% told you, we desire our kids to have a five-day-a-week education second semester. You can see we are a majority, not a minority. I am confident if you put that survey out again with return now, that percentage would be remarkably similar, maybe after quarter-one grades, even higher. The parents are telling you, we do not believe the risk of COVID outweighs the detriment to our child's mental well-being and education, where we have determined 40% of our district's children are suffering from reduced grades and increased mental health challenges. Again, we want you to simply understand what our kids are experiencing with, experiencing. The data, however, I'm most concerned about is the data that will eventually show potentially how far behind our kids are going to be and how our scores compare to those students all around us who have had the benefit of five-day-a-week schooling. Maybe this will be a non-issue. We don't know at this time. This is absolutely no fault of the teachers. It is just difficult for younger grades and those in challenging courses to not have the benefit to interact in class, ask questions, and get explanations by trained adults. Most of us have done an online training, and we know questions that arise, we never get answers to because there is no one there to answer them just in that moment, and we forget, we move on. My daughter is being taught 25% of her school hours a week in front of a teacher and 75% independent study. This simply is just not enough to consist of a quality education, no matter how hard our teachers are working and trying. So again, the district continues to tell us it is not safe for our kids to go back to school now without social distancing, and I can't believe you. I cannot use the data and observations around me and believe this, and I'm not alone. Again, I bring up Fort Zumwalt with over 18,000 students returning to school September 1st, five days a week, because 80% of the parents desired this form of education, just as over 70% of our parents desire. Every week, they share their COVID, COVID numbers. The numbers at the end of September I shared are no different than those this past week, 0.1%. You cannot convince me that schools are a super-spreader of COVID and an unplace, unsafe place for most children or adults. I am sure many children are safer at school than spending hours alone at home week in and week out. As parents, you encourage us to be flexible, as any time we may move from remote to in-person to hybrid. Several parents I know chose remote simply to avoid this back and forth, but now we are told we need over two months to figure out classroom adjustments and staffing. What do we need? Do we need a call for more teachers to help them out? Do we need to shift kids in classes to balance class size? I would have assumed when scheduling was done in July, teacher A had 25 students, teacher B had 25 students, so when we brought them all back together, this would be a non-issue. But if this is an issue, tell the parents, explain it. The more we know about each other's challenges, the more we can work together to get the resolution. I am sure students, teachers, and parents can handle these changes. They've already I am sure students, teachers, and parents can handle these changes, they've already been doing so much. I also want to address the concern brought about by the administration that those families who chose hybrid may not feel comfortable being in class five days a week but okay with two. But again, there was no guarantee to hybrid parents, that I recall that this was a set goal all semester long in July. Again, you encourage us to be flexible. I am encouraging this board and our leaders in the school to be flexible. We have given you the okay to get our kids back into school five days a week, and we believe the benefit outweighs the risk. Please respect the voice of all of those involved. Start with sixth grade next week, make the necessary adjustments to class size, after that, seventh and eighth. There's no need to change bus schedules, lengthen the day, or attempt to serve lunch at this point, simply bring back kids for the shortened day, five days a week. We need to be a district that demonstrates leadership based on data, not decisions motivated by emotion. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Maggie, sorry. My name is Maggie Dust, and I'm a seventh-grade science teacher at Lincoln. I teach both remote and hybrid students. I have a degree in elementary education and have devoted my life to my students. I've worked in our district for eight years at Lincoln, and have coached our students for seven of those years. While I am speaking about the issues that I face at the middle school, I am speaking as an individual. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the proposed schedule change for second semester and the potential problems. The school board will be voting on moving from the current hybrid model to five days of instruction. If this change were to happen, there could be several issues. Student schedules will change dramatically. Due to the change in numbers, this could include students having major change in their classes and even teachers. I currently teach both Lincoln and Liberty students, which that in itself is kind of crazy. These changes will be bringing a brand-new set of expectations, not only for students, but also parents and also teachers. In addition, teachers could be required to teach a subject or a curriculum that they have never taught before. This not only affects their ability to plan those lessons effectively, but could be detrimental to students' quality of education. Furthermore, with students, the likelihood of needing to revert back to a hybrid schedule or to move to fully remote is much higher. Our students are at risk of having a new schedule every two weeks, and I think that it's important for parents to consider that the only way to guarantee a consistent schedule second quarter is for the parent to choose a fully-remote plan. This model will eliminate Remote Fridays. Remote Fridays are used for delivering whole-group instruction, and in my case, that's for my A students, my B students, and remote kids to all see another student's face via Zoom. Individual student check-ins can occur, family contacts, collaboration within cohorts and content area to ensure quality instruction. Teachers also use this time to create brand-new instructional materials. This also allows teachers to provide timely feedback and respond to students and parents in real time. We can have open office hours that promote that parent-teacher interaction, instead of just waiting for those three days in October. In a five-day model, there is no possibility for social distancing. Even if class sizes are condensed, there is no way to keep a six-foot distance, and in some cases, even two or three. In fact, in some rooms, students will not even be able to keep a foot apart. As teachers, if we want to properly instruct, we also feel the need to move around the classroom, to engage and monitor learning. Without the use of lockers, we also have backpacks, crates, and soon coats to navigate. This puts teachers and students at an even higher risk. We are finally building a relationship with students during these unprecedented and challenging times and schedules. There have been a learning curve, but we are finally starting to glimpse into the more positives than negatives, which I hope you too, as parents, board members, teachers, faculty, changing the model yet again reverts all of our growth back to square one in so many ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name's Alicia Downs. I have three children in the district. One is an eighth grader at Liberty Middle School, and I am also an attorney and have a business in this community, so I feel that I'm also a stakeholder as a, from owning a business in this community. I do want to say I totally understand the teachers. Mrs. Hollis, I actually, when I sent a letter to the board last week, I said, "I wouldn't be surprised if you sent the teachers a survey now, that their mental health is probably suffering also." So that has been brought up, and I don't doubt that that's the case, too, also. I don't have a lot to speak about tonight, but there are some questions I would like answered. I wrote my very first letter to the board, August 24th, which was over two months ago. I wrote that letter because of the decision to move my fourth graders to a hybrid schedule the following week for no reason other than some orange warning designation. There was no COVID in their school, and in fact, they have not had COVID in their school this entire time. In that letter, I addressed the fact that students were promised live instructions by the district on Fridays and that it was not happening. Over two months later, it is still not happening on Fridays. As I have repeatedly stated, Friday is a lost day of instruction. We have the results of the parent survey that's been mentioned, 74% of middle school parents want their children in school five days a week, and 65% of high school parents want their children in school five days a week. The survey reveals that 40% of middle school students have lower grades, and 40%'s mental health has been adversely affected. 38% of high school students have lower grades, and 38% believe that the hybrid schedule hasn't had, has had an adverse effect on their students' mental health at the high school. I have been bringing this to your attention for two months now. This is my fourth time speaking at the board, meaning, trust me, I have a lot of other things I'd rather be doing right now, but I feel like I've continually stated this, and it wasn't until the survey came out that it revealed everything I've been saying. On a positive note, I am glad the district has finally come up with a plan to get our kids back in school. What I don't understand, and what I would like answered tonight, is why we are holding our children hostage for another three months, given the survey results. We know the majority of parents want their kids in school, and we now have a majority of teachers that also want the kids in school five days. So we do not understand why we need to wait another three months. It is being whispered all over and getting louder by the day that the union is preventing this. I don't know if that's true or not, but that is what is going on. I have sent a handful of emails since my August 24th letter, trying to come up with ideas to get these kids back in school, and touting all the research and the doctors who believe getting our kids back in school is the best thing for them, including my child's own doctor, who is furious that kids are not back in school, when she is inches away from their faces every day, multiple times a day, testing 10 kids a day for COVID. I have only ever had three board members in this room respond to any of my emails. One board member told me that Dr. Henderson is trying to repair the relationship with the union. Since the board members don't respond to our emails and have turned over all power over to Dr. Henderson, we would like to know who is advocating for our children right now, other than the parents in this room. Mrs. Hollis feels like no one's advocating for her, but they have a teachers' union. Parents feel like they have no one standing up for us right now. Finally, if the district is digging its heels in and refusing to send our kids back to school any earlier than mid-January, then what are we going to do differently second quarter? Last week, and I will say again, when we talked about pulling my eighth grader to private school, he cried. I'm sure he doesn't want me telling you guys that, but he did. He is shadowing at Father McGivney tomorrow, because I don't know what next year's going to look like. He, it's for baseball, it's been his dream to play baseball for EHS, and at this point, I don't know if that's going to happen. Last week, on one remote day, he was done with his work in 45 minutes. On the second remote day, he was done in an hour. He has been to school 21 days in seven months. The district cannot and has not delivered on any kind of instruction for remote days that comes close to comparing to the education that they receive in person. And I want to make it clear to the teachers that is not about them. We're saying we value education, and we value our kids being in front of a teacher, because they're the ones that are best at educating our kids, not us. We could have added Friday to the second quarter, since it is a wasted day anyway, but chose not to. Why not? Again, who in this room is advocating for our students, other than the parents? I would like an answer to that question, because as parents, almost every parent in the room feels like we are alone right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you for sending out the information, a decision was made. So, step one, you made your decision, and we're going to live with it for right now. But the information that was sent out was a little bit incomplete. I'm going to second the request for the metrics. We have a middle school metrics, and in that letter, it says we have a stricter metrics for high school. Can you please, by next, by this Friday, send out what the metrics are? We need that information. I need that as a parent to understand what it is. Like, what determines whether my kid's going to go to school five days, and then maybe hybrid, and then back to five days? I need to know if that is worth the risk. Secondly, could you send out the teaching criteria for the five-day remote program? Right now, I'm going to be honest, call me a bad parent, I don't know what that means. Five days remote? Based on what I've heard, it's a minimum requirement of two hours per week from each teacher. So if that's the case, the parents need to know that for five days of remote, their kid is only required to get two hours of that. So I think by Friday, we need to know as parents what the requirements for the teaching staff is, if you go hybrid, five days a week, and full-remote. Those are critical decisions that I have to make as a parent. Currently, I'm going to reiterate, we currently have teachers teaching in-person four days a week. The hybrid teachers are in-class with students. Please ask them, again, how big do they think their class can be? I would like them to be involved with that. Also, would you please consider, prior to second semester, can you bring in and phase the children? Bring in the sixth graders first by November 20th, and let them be in school for a week or two. Find out what really happens. You're setting this district up to come back on January 19th, completely unprepared, for 70% of the school to return. How are the doors going to get handled, in and out? How are the hallways going to get handled? You can start learning right now, if you bring the kids back in phases. The kids can start understanding, what are the rules in the hallways? What are the rules for bathroom? What are the rules for eat? What are the rules that are going to be changed from the last time they were in school full-time, which was in March? So there's going to be more changes. I ask you to please phase them in, if you can, earlier than later. I also disagree that the kids are at the same place they are right now as they would be last year. I applaud this teacher, if she's doing it. I applaud her. I applaud her for prerecording. There are few teachers that are doing that. I would like to know what the requirements are from the teaching staff that's going to be required each week, because I do believe the prerecorded classes help mitigate if someone gets quarantined. Those kids that, if they're in school, whether it's hybrid or full-time, a prerecorded class can help a kid being quarantined that was just exposed to it. They may not have it, and they can't come to school. They're going to lose 10 days of education and be given self-taught work. It's already a struggle. So I applaud her for doing that. I wish more would do, I hope you hold the teachers to her standard. I would love that. Also, I'm going to be honest, the Friday, the remote days, I hope you realize, you're going to hear a bunch of people, Fridays are a day off. Please, make Friday a school day, somehow, some way. Make them attend the class, 20 to 25 minutes of instruction, something, because Fridays aren't doing anything. And I'll thank you again, at least for making the decision. I hope you take some of these concerns to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Nate Bonio. I've spoken here before. I appreciate the chance to do so again. You're in a no-win situation, you know this. Your teachers are stretched way too thin, they're on the edge, your students are equally that way, so I apologize, you know, that you're in this situation. I'd love to see a show of hands, because I've heard it with other speakers, but how many of the board members have an EHS student? Dr. Olson, very good, excellent, thank you. Also, I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of the board members read the surveys from the students, parents, and teachers? It's the majority of you all, which is great, thank you. Excellent. At the very first board meeting I attended with other concerned parents, Mrs. Burdles jokingly said at the end of the meeting, and I think you probably remember this now, you said, "We hope to see you all at the next meeting." It was kind of funny at first, because no one ever shows up, right? And unfortunately, here we are, eight weeks later, you know, after that very board meeting, talking about the same issues. So that's kind of an issue for me. Everything that we said would happen, has happened. Each one of us who's come up here and stepped up and made statements, it's come true. It's been spot-on. We have seen our kids failing. They're tired, they're emotionally vulnerable. The virus mortality rate is decreasing, treatments are improving, schools are opening up without major incidents. Children are not transmitting the virus to other children. Something new, but that's good. You can see this in our own elementary schools, but yet you continue to ignore the data, the science, the suffering, and the sentiment. You have not provided us with metrics for our students to return to five-day in-person learning. You continue to discriminate against the poor of our district. Eight months into this issue, you have and continue to fail our children. The surveys you conducted tell the tale. 40% of our children have lower grades. 40% of our children have higher emotional instability. 73% of our middle school parents want five days a week in-person instruction. 64% of our high school parents want five days a week in-person instruction. Over half of our teachers want our kids back full-time in-person. So here's what we're dealing with. Here's an example of how the parents and the students of this district are being treated by this board and our superintendent. This is a quote. "My God, Jesus, shut that SOB up." This is a quote clearly heard on a microphone at the last board meeting, as one of our parents tried to speak to the board. Our superintendent neither tried to determine who said this, nor did he issue an apology for this outburst. This is unacceptable. It's a microcosm of how our board feels about and listens to the concerns of our parents. Mr. Courtney, would you like to apologize? Mr. Garrett, would you like to apologize? Dr. Olson? Mr. McDole?
I'd like to apologize.
Thank you. Dr. Henderson?
I would like to make a brief statement, just if you'll stop the timer for a second. I just think that it's important to respond to the comment made by the speaker. I want to make it clear that I did not make the comments, the statements that we heard at the last video at the meeting, and what I'm doing responding to the speaker is not going to be typical of our protocol. You know, this is not going to be the way that this works, but I feel I must do it, because I think it's extremely important to be clear that those comments are not acceptable by me or by any person on this board, or from the district, and that that type of behavior is not going to be tolerated in a public forum here. And so, you know, with that, Ms. Burdles, if you want to continue speaking, that's fine.
I appreciate that.
And I just want to add, it's not fair to levy false accusations when no one in the room heard that comment at all.
It was on tape.
It was on tape. It would, no one in this room sitting here today heard that comment, until someone brought it up the following day that that comment was made. If someone had made that comment, we would have heard it. So I don't think it's fair to levy a false accusation against anyone in this room.
Point taken. Point taken. We need action. This board needs to vote tonight to retake control of the return to learn plan. Currently, it's out of your hands. We need to vote tonight to retake that control. Then the board needs to vote tonight to get our students back in school in person five days a week. Put our children first. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Fitzgerald. My daughter is a senior at EHS. First of all, kudos to all in a very difficult situation and doing what you can. I'm an advocate for a full-time in-person classroom work. That being said, I'd like you all to continue to develop the remote plan because many will choose that. And also beyond that, that is the primary and only fallback plan for both the hybrid and the full-time when they go to that in January. My daughter was possibly exposed and was required to quarantine a couple of months ago. And she's a hybrid student and that created kind of a problem in that if she missed two days out of the week, she basically missed two days of instruction. I was told that that is handled like if a kid was sick, they'd get their homework packet. And, and, and that's how that was. I was hoping that, and through some effort, it was allowed that my daughter was able to tap into some of the data feeds for some of the remote kids. I would like to see that any kid that's put in quarantine has access to the remote data streams so that they can seamlessly continue to receive instruction. When full-time starts up again in late January, this, this problem is not gonna be just two days of instruction missed in person. It'll be 10 or 14, depending on how that, that falls out. So continuing to have a very good remote program to rely on and fall back on and to have every kid have access to that, it would be really important and I think it would be an improvement to the process. The last thing, as a, my daughter's a senior, we're in the ACT process for applying and touring colleges. And I know we're looking at metrics right now, we're looking at metrics next week and next quarter, but I think that the final metric will really come out on how good a job everybody has done in, over the next two years. Will ACT scores slide? How many kids will have to battle and compete with kids from other parts of the country who are not in this situation, who are back in full-time receiving that, who are receiving a little more continuity than I believe that we are seeing right now? And so, just something to think about, maybe you, when you're making your decisions, these very difficult decisions, maybe use that as your compass. Is in two years, are the kids gonna have the same opportunities? Are they gonna score as well? What is the fallout gonna look like? I think that the way to, to address that is get them back in school just as soon as you can and, and give them the instruction that they had last year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, my name's Keith Morgan. I'm sorry that I feel like I have to be here. I normally only come to these when I'm getting an award, seeing people get an award, starting a new program or coming because Dr. Seuss had his birthday. And my name's Keith Morgan. I'm 58 years old, so I'm one of those people who are at risk. I have a wife of an undisclosed age. I have a daughter who is a junior at EHS and I have a son who's in eighth grade at Liberty. So I know a lot about being a parent in District 7. So while I'm here as a teacher, I'm here as a parent too. You know that teachers are kinda going through the wringer, but that's what we do. If you look at the board at Liberty, about why we come to teach, it's all about the kids. Every one of those posts are about why we're here for community for those kids. So we sacrifice for that. We knew in going in, we were gonna sacrifice. We know we're going to a low-paid job that's unappreciated. So let's shove that aside and just think what's happening and what's going on. I've got four college degrees, two bachelors and two masters. The last I got just so I could teach. That was my master's in education that I got after many years of doing other things. I have been a researcher, an adjunct professor, a university lecturer, a safety officer and a biologist and other things I don't wanna mention. For the last seven years, I've taught in this district. I've taught at EHS South, at EHS and at Liberty, mostly at Liberty. I've absolutely loved working with the kids. There's things about public schools that I find really irritating, having worked in a lot of different other sectors, for state agencies, for government contractors, for private enterprise and even owning my own business. One thing is that it's extremely slow to change. It's really good at stability. It's got a lot of institutional inertia and like when we try to do tech changes, it's like, oh, three years from now, we'll get something. And anybody else, bam, it could be done. We're good at stability, we're bad at agility. Really bad at agility. COVID turned that upside down and we had to become very agile. And it was like juggling monkeys. And we've done a pretty darn good job, but every day, the biggest, scariest thing that we face is uncertainty. Day after day, we don't know if it's gonna be going into this plan or that plan or the other plan. And what I would wish for us is we could do like they tell us when you invest. Look at the long-term. We're investing, we're investing in our kids. Let's not look at day-to-day metrics. Let's not watch market fluctuations by the day and panic or be euphoric. Let's think of the long-term. I would recommend we pick the end date of the year and make a plan to do the same thing until then. Let us get comfortable. Let us settle into what we're doing and let us have stability, which we're really good at producing in public education. Let me tell you about some things we're doing well, cuz everybody's talking about what we're doing bad. Here's some things we're doing that are great. Students are benefiting from smaller classes. I am able now to actually not have disruptions from kids every hour and instead focus on learning. The kids that are there are getting really good instruction, they're getting personal attention, they're getting immediate answers to questions that they wouldn't have asked in a, in a class full of 30 people. So we're seeing people bloom and do better who before would've been marginalized and quieted by those who would speak the most in a classroom of 30 kids. So they're getting attention. They're gaining confidence in the technology that they're getting to use at home. We're, hey, we are a technology bottleneck at the school because we're not an early adopter of fast technology, cuz we're a public institution and we're always on the lagging edge. We just do not fast adopt technology, doesn't happen. But we're able with them in a hybrid model to leverage at-home technology. And for those kids who can't use their at-home technology, we're able to try to give them fixes and patches and get them in the school to use what we, limited resources we have. So those kids can learn technology and when they're at home, they can learn independence and maturity and life skills that will make them lifelong learners. And that will give them the ability to, to persist and survive in a world where it's gonna be necessary to find information on their own. When I wanna fix my oven, I go to YouTube. I don't sign up for a college course in how to fix ovens. You know, I, I'll go build an electric guitar if I want to, cuz I can look it up and find out how to do it. And that's the kind of skills we want our kids to have and they're growing in that and they're maturing in that. I'm asking that you please give us the stability to keep growing. We're busting our butts coming up with new and better lesson plans every day. There's not a lesson that's been taught this year that hasn't been retooled, reworked, redesigned and redone. We need time in our paid day to do those instead of doing it on weekends and nights. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joanna Pollak. My daughter is a freshman here in Edwardsville High School. I'm a local attorney and I serve on the board of a local university who's grappling with all the same issues that you guys are doing. I wanna thank all the teachers for what they're doing, trying to accommodate the students. My daughter is one of the people who's been suffering both emotionally and academically. I hope I don't start crying. I've never seen my daughter in the shape that she's in. She was always a very strong student and this has just turned everything upside down for her. I've hired a tutor to come into my house now to work with her two days a week. I'm fortunate that I have the resources to be able to do that. Clearly, most people and, um, don't have that opportunity cuz I can work from home and oversee some of it, but it's, she's still not there yet. It's still a constant struggle to motivate her to get, to sit in front of her computer and do the work that she needs to be done. At the end of the day, I'm hopeful that what some of the parents have been saying and the faculty have been saying will come true for her, that she will learn about advocacy and about communicating with her teachers. Fingers crossed. It's the, it's, the risk is too great right now as far as I'm concerned for these students. I, I guess my point comes to, first of all, I wanna make also echo the sentiment. Maybe some teachers are teaching Zoom classes on Friday. I hope they are. My daughters are not. It's, um, by and large, it's a check-in and maybe there's an hour, there's one teacher that she has that actually is communicating new content and stimulating the classroom. That's it. I mean, it's, it's not happening to the degree that it looks like on paper this is actually being delivered. It's, it's just not. My two points for the board to consider are better communication to the community members, to your faculty, to your students. And also to talk about leadership for a second, but first on the point of communication. You know, my daughter was an eighth grader at Lincoln and she did not hear from a single teacher from the middle of March until the end of the school year. Not one teacher. It was all just posting assignments online and I understand everyone was scrambling, trying to figure out what to do, but you have a 13-year-old whose life is just flipped upside down and I, I just couldn't believe the assistant principal contacted the parents routinely just to sort of ask, you know, how your students are doing. And I said, I would just think one teacher would reach out to the students in this class and just say, "Hey, how are you doing?" Have a Zoom class just so everyone can wave at each other and say, "Hi, I don't, I don't know." Nothing happened. And that set the tone for where we are now. The school district and the board should be communicating regularly. There should be, at the university where I serve, we have a community dashboard. It's accessible, it's online, it's conveyed to the students, to the faculty, to anyone that wants to see and it's a running, almost in real time, what the numbers are on campus. And then there's color coding with metrics in the community data and the local, um, on-campus data and there's a color coding system. So you, anyone can pull it up and you see, "Oh, it's a green day" or, "Oh, we're edging into yellow. We need to be more cautious and scale back some of our activities." It's not rocket scientists, but it's something that I think needs to happen here. And, and for us to not even know what these metrics are this late in the game is unacceptable. And then the other point is on leadership. You know, we're all watching, the parents, the community members are watching other local districts grapple with the same issues that you guys are grappling with. And they're making decisions and those decisions are trending toward, excuse me, towards bringing students back. And I, I am very proud to live in Edwardsville. I was proud to choose to send my child here and I'm honestly looking at private school now for my daughter because I, I'm just not seeing that this is a community of leadership right now in our current academic setting. I encourage you please to, to, to make the decisions and for the protection of the faculty, for the students, for everyone across the board. It's a lot to just, to decide and there's no easy answers, but certainly communication and, and taking the lead on what we can do as a community for our students is something that, that I implore you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Dr. Henderson has a letter that he has received or an email that he has received.
Received one letter from a local community member. Chris Leopold asked to read there. Said, "I would officially like to express my disappointment in the decision to return all high school students to five-day-a-week in-person attendance after January 18th, 2021. The two available options, all in-person or all remote, ask families to make a choice between limiting exposure to the coronavirus and capitalizing on all the curricular options that best fit their students' academic plans. If we choose to move our senior to the all-remote option, the only subjects available to him are English, math and consumer ed. But let's take a closer look. He'll be forced to move from AP English to honors British Lit. Instead of Calculus BC, he would be required to drop down to Calculus AB. Additionally, he will lose the opportunity to earn four dual credit, college credits during the second semester. The other two classes he was planning on taking are simply not offered remote, AP Macroeconomics and honors German IV. Just to summarize my son's situation, if we intend to protect him from the very real risk of exposure that comes with sending him to school, to sit in six classrooms where up to 33 students and a teacher will be crammed together, he will lose 11 dual college credits, a semester worth of instruction to optimize his chances of being successful on the AP English test. A plainer way of putting this, he will not be able to reign in, remain in a single class he is planning to take. Can you imagine how demoralizing this would be for a high-achieving, hard-working student? In our house, we believe in science. We believe in following the CDC recommendations for six-feet social distancing, particularly indoors. The question I pose to the recipients of this correspondence is simple. What about the sciences change between August and now? Have we learned that COVID-19 is any less contagious than first believed? Has the district instituted a program of daily rapid testing to minimize the risk of sending my 18-year-old student to school? We know the answer is nothing has changed. No additional precautions have been put in place to minimize the risk to students and others. There were justified reasons to de-densify the high school beginning in the fall and those reasons are still justified. In my opinion, the only thing that has changed is that the superintendent and board have asked, acquiesced in the face of pressure put on them by a vocal minority who choose to accept the risk of sending all 2,000-plus students to the high school. I advocate that the in-person hybrid option, that has so far successfully minimized the positivity numbers for students and personnel at the high school, continue to be available. Let this correspondence serve as my formal request to carefully reconsider the recent decision to return to five-day-a-week in-person instruction at the high school. Chris Leopold.
We will move on to our approval of consent agenda items. Would any board member like to remove any consent agenda item for separate action? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended this evening.
So move.
And questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Della Reva?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Brumbach?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burdles?
Yes.
At this time in the agenda, we are going through the building reports. These are posted on the board docs and we ask if any principals that are in attendance would like to have anything add to their written report to the board this evening? Yes, Dr. Stewart? Would you come to the microphone, please?
This will be real short. Dr. Henderson just wanted me to mention, one of the new things I know he's talked to you about is Edwardsville High School's looking to restart our Athletic Hall of Fame. It had run up until about the mid-'80s and then dropped off. And through the work of Mr. Fox and Mr. Leip, the tennis coach, the three of us and a couple others are sitting down, putting together bylaws and are looking to restart the Hall of Fame. We'd like to have the first new and inaugural class come in during the 21-22 school year. As we get more things together, I will send them to the board for a year review, but he is, Dr. Henderson, I just wanted you to mention that tonight so everyone's on the same page.
Okay. Thank you. And seeing no other principals in attendance, because we tried to keep the room available for the public, we did not encourage the principals to join us this evening. At this time, we will go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Henderson, will you give us your report?
Thank you, Ms. Burdles. I wanted to mention a couple of topics. The first one is that parent-teacher conferences are taking place this week on Wednesday through Friday and I think from what we've heard, I think this year, as much as any others, it's important that we have that homeschool connection. So I wanna encourage parents to sign up for conferences and talk about your students with the teachers. Sometimes it seems like the board or myself will get issues that are more, would be more appropriate just to start with the teachers and, and have those conversations. And so I really do wanna encourage people to, to do that. Parents can sign up via pick-a-time. If there's any questions, contact the students' building principal. Any parent who's concerned about the way that their child's education should definitely take advantage of parent-teacher conferences this year. Second thing I wanted to mention was the Equity Task Force. We have a full Equity Task Force meeting virtually this Wednesday, so we're looking forward to getting that group together. And moving forward, we had a, a training with all staff at the last institute on the 9th, I think I mentioned that as well. And so I'll give you a report after we have that meeting this Wednesday evening at 5:00. And so I'll give you a report after we have that meeting this Wednesday evening at 5:00. Thirdly, we've set a Citizens Advisory Council meeting, a CAC meeting, for next Thursday, November 5th, at 7:00 PM. We're not sure yet whether we're going to be able to hold the meeting in person or virtually yet. It's going to depend on the restrictions that we're under because that committee is right around 25 people, so we're going to have to see. But it's going to be at 7:00 PM on November 5th. And the purpose of this meeting is going to be to determine how the CAC will be utilized as we move forward. So I think Ms. Pitts, you're on that, and we talked about in the future meetings adding another board member as well. So if there's someone that really wants to be a part of this one, they can in addition. But if you'd rather wait until January, we're thinking we'd kind of have a reboot of kind of what that's going to be. But if you, if you're interested in being on that as well, you can let myself or Ms. Burdles know. A couple of positives that I just wanted to share is that Dr. Stewart added in his report, we've just about wrapped up all of the EHS Fall Sports. It's, at the beginning of the year, if you would have asked if we would have made it through the season, I would have thought it was probably a long shot, but it's actually been a great season, although there hasn't been able to be as much travel as typical. It's been more of the, the, the local teams, and there's no state tournaments this year. It's been a really po, a really positive thing at both the middle school and high school level. And as usual, the EHS Fall Sports teams did, did outstanding. And next week, it wraps up with cross-country and sectionals and normals, so that's the last thing that's, that's going on. At the elementary level, I don't know if you read any of the reports, but I thought this was really interesting, an update from Cassin's. Fifth-grade teacher, Rob Nun, had a virtual pool party with the author. If, if any of you have kids that have been through grade school, you've definitely seen Diary of a Wimpy Kid series. He had a virtual pool party with his class and the author of that book. And so that's, that's pretty good. They were one of the classes that was selected, one of nine classrooms selected to be a part of this. And that's actually going to be broadcast on social media Thursday from 11:00 to 11:45. So the event's happened already, but the fact that Mr. Nun got that completed, I thought was a really, a really neat thing. And so I wanted to highlight that just a little bit. And we'll discuss some of the issues related to the transition plan when we hit that item on the agenda. So that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. We are going to committee reports, and the first is which the policy committee, Chairman Terry Dalariva, would you give us a report?
Yes, thank you, Jill. The policy committee meeting met on Wednesday, October 21st. Eleven policies that have been under a 30-day board review have been forwarded to the full board for approval tonight. Other items under discussion were the CAC operational guidelines. The Citizens Advisory Council is considered by the board to be an entity whose members offer their experience and expertise and have a deep commitment to education in the Edwardsville School District and is a very valuable council for us. Lastly, we reviewed our policy for public participation at school board meetings to ensure our compliance with the Open Meetings Act and Illinois School Code in order to make an effort to promote open, positive discourse at our meetings. We are here to welcome you and to listen to your valid concerns so that together we can improve education. That was the policy committee meeting. And Jill, if I may, add to the finance committee meeting. We, we also met earlier this evening for a quarter, quarterly review of the budget. Thank you, Mr. Courtney, for providing that budget overview, which can be accessed online. Some of the items up for discussion were just basically some differences in revenue, for example, for kids, kids' own expenditures, they're the same, revenues are lower, and the same can be said for food service. There, there are various categories that you will see that if you go ahead and take a look at the budget yourself. I'm not going to go into more detail tonight, but I would like to add that Dave Courtney was, Mr. Courtney was at the TIP Board meeting this past week, and the city will issue a check on November 4th for $773,000. And that money will be used for infrastructure for the elementary schools. And then again, Dave mentioned that we are hoping to see an additional payment next April to follow up with that, with the expiration of TIP III. So that is very good news for us, and I think that kind of wraps up the finance committee meeting.
Thank you. We will move on to a discussion item, and I will turn it over to Dr. Henderson. And the item is the IASB Delegate Assembly of Proposals.
Thank you, Ms. Burdles. And really, there's not too much to mention on this. As we mentioned at the last meeting, every board of education in the state of Illinois has a chance to have a seat at the table for the IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly, and can send one member to be a part of that. And basically, the organization wants from its members to determine how they're going to sort of lobby for programs and laws to be passed in Springfield. So what it does is it puts out a list of resolutions, and then it has the members' vote on which way they're going to support on those resolutions. So they're not making the decision, all they're doing is deciding how they will try to convince people in Springfield which way to go when these types of issues come up. So you have a list of those proposals. The, the delegate assembly is not till November 14th, so there's one meeting in between now and then. But the reason I just wanted to mention it, there doesn't appear to be too much that's really controversial. Last year, there was one on arming teachers. That was a little more controversial. That does not exist this year on the list. And so really, the thing I wanted to see is if the board had chosen someone to be a part of the delegate assembly, because I wanted to mention that there is an informational meeting on, a Zoom meeting on these proposals on the 5th of November. So if someone wanted to, if someone wanted to be a part of that committee or wanted to be the board's representative to the delegate committee, they could take part in that to learn a little bit more about the resolutions if they wanted to. So I didn't know if, if that, that we don't have to, we're not going to discuss any of the resolutions here tonight, but if after that, if, if the board would like to have a discussion at the next meeting, we certainly could do that if there was anything that you wanted to talk about, so.
There were a couple of things that caught my eye, so I wouldn't, I would appreciate a, a discussion added the next meeting.
Okay. And if anyone would like to volunteer to be the delegate, we, just let me know. And as Dr. Henderson said, we've got a November 5th meeting, that's a virtual meeting as a refresher or to bring the delegates up to speed as far as what the options are. And then the actual assembly is on November the 14th, so if anybody wants to volunteer, you can let me know. At this time, we will move on to our action considerations, and first of which is the approval of personnel resignations. Dr. Garrett.
Thank you, Mrs. Burdles. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the resignations and retirements of employees as discussed earlier this evening in executive session.
Some move.
Second. And any discussion or questions? Please call the roll. Olson.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Dalariva.
Yes.
Brumbek.
Yes.
McDoll.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Burdles.
Yes.
Approval of personnel employments. Dr. Garrett.
Thank you, Mrs. Burdles. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, or transfer of employees as discussed earlier this evening in executive session.
Some move.
Second.
And any discussion? Please call the roll.
McDoll.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Dalariva.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Brumbek.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Burdles.
Yes.
Approval of the 2020-2021 second semester transition plan. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Burdles. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the plan that's up for approval this evening, and just to kind of clear up a few points that I've heard mentioned over and over, as I think we can tell just from everyone in the audience, and I think it's mentioned a couple times, it's definitely a sort of a no-win situation here, but we have to look out what's best for our students, our staff, at, at all times. Let me just give you some of the details of what is in the plan, so you know what, what is approving, because I just want to make sure, because the metrics are there, and I'll explain them. The highlights of the plan include the following, that it is the district's intention to have the students attend in person beginning five days a week, the week beginning the week of January 19th. Now, the reason that that was chosen there instead of two weeks before, just because it's been asked a few times, it wasn't asked specifically tonight, is that people are finding in other, in us talking with some of the other districts that have had people, whether they're back full-time or not, it is that after breaks, there seem to be, there seem to be more outbreaks of cases. And even in some of the districts, and right now, there's still only one in Madison County that is going full-time, there is discussion about even putting off coming back until after that time. It seems like coming back those first couple of weeks is just a recipe for having a bunch of cases, having a bunch of quarantines, and having to move back in. So that was why the 19th was chosen. It's the intention to come back on the 19th. What's in the plan is this, at the middle school level, the metric is internal cases, the cases that are going on within the school. There must continue to be no outbreaks that would cause the schools to move into, right now, to the 100% remote. We've had limited outbreaks. There's been one outbreak at a school, at a middle school, one at the high school throughout the beginning, and outbreak is defined as two cases within one room. Okay? So there can't be outbreaks. If there are not outbreaks at the, at the middle school when we hit that time, what's in the plan right now says the students will return on June, on January 19th. That's the metric. Okay? That's the metric. Okay? At the high school level, in, in discussions, there is some additional concerns that we've had. So at the high school, it's still the intention, what's in the plan, to have students come back five days a week, begin on the 19th. As is the case in the middle school, there can be no outbreaks. That's a given. We can't have outbreaks in the school and then, and say that we're going to add more kids into the, to the population. There's one additional metric that's part of the plan at the high school level. It's very difficult, of all the metrics that are out there, to pick which ones are the most important. You know, it's, there's, was discussion many times and with all other schools and districts, I'm sorry, well, the districts, about, you know, there's cases per 100,000, there's positivity rate, there's new cases, there's youth cases, there's all those factors that go in. And we're not, you know, medical experts. That's not our area of expertise to say that whether it be 101 cases per 100,000 or 99 cases per 100,000 and setting those is, that's going to be our level. So the additional metric is one that sets, is set by IDPH. If the district, or if Madison County is under a resurgence mitigation policy that limits to 25 people or less, we've been in that mitigation before, it's possible that we're going to go into it this week. It sounds like it's possible it's going to go into it this week. If that were the case, when we hit that time, January 15th, it comes out on Fridays, then we would not start at the high school level. That's the metric. That is the metric that is, that's in there. So whether or not people agree with it, I just want to share what the metric is that's in the plan. That's the metric that's in the plan. There's a lot of metrics, then, more details about, once we're in five days person, once that happens, what would cause it to go back into hybrid. Again, it's the similar thing with outbreaks. If there's outbreaks within the school, we'd go back into a hybrid system. I'm not going to get into all the details there. They're, they're clearly written in, in the plan. If there were outbreaks in any school, it would be the school, not necessarily the whole district. If it happened at the high school, the high school could go into the hybrid. If it happened at Lincoln, Lincoln Liberty, or any elementary for that matter, that, that could possibly happen. So those details are in as well. What would cause to go all the way to remote is in the plan as well. But the main things that, that seem to be the most common questions are, will, will we be going back in? This plan, what is the way it's written here, is that on the 19th, we'd go back five days a week if those things occur. Now, there, obviously, there's been, you know, a lot of discussions that's taken place, and there's certainly not been any total agreement that's come up in, in our discussion. We've had very good discussion, in my mind, and I want to thank the teachers that have been a part of that. And we've come up with some, some strategies. We've had to change some of them in order to get something that feels like the board would be willing to approve. And so that is kind of where we're at right now. Now, I want to say one other thing about this. We're in constant contact with the Madison County Health Department. And before we do anything, we run our plans by the Madison County Health Department. And as part of this, we spoke with Madison County Health Department the morning before this went out on Friday. And they said that, that they could go along with this, as long as we consult with them in January, when we come back, we have to look at the current state. While we think, while this is the plan, and the intention is, if this plan is passed, to have kids move back, we still have to have that conversation with the Madison County Health Department when we hit January. Could some, could they tell us that something's different and something's wrong? It's not impossible, but I just have to say that that's out there. You know, we can't just say that if the Health Department says we don't recommend going back, for whatever reason they give us at that time, that that would be something that we would ignore if that were the case. So that's one thing that I, I think needs to be mentioned as well. The intention of the plan, of course, as I've said a couple times, is to have students attend five days a week for the next semester. Everything in the plan was considered and discussed. We had discussions about block scheduling. We had discussions about different types of scheduling to, to see if it worked. Teachers and administrators agreed on, for, for, for this district, just to kind of give one example, that block scheduling, we didn't think was kind of worth the value for what we got out of it. And there's, there's reasons for that. I've had people ask why we, why we didn't consider it. We did, but it's something that we had when we had discussions with, with teachers and administrators. As we move forward, assuming this plan is, it goes forward tonight, we plan as soon as possible to get a group of teachers, administrators, and hopefully a board member or two, to be part of a group that looks towards what we can do to help teachers feel comfortable in a class that might not be socially distanced the way that they are right now. We do have a little bit of time, and I know that there's some people that are, that are calling for, you know, immediate. We've made the decision that it's, that the second semester is when these will be implemented. We did give a commitment to, in, on July 30th, that we would be a part of a hybrid schedule, and we don't have room in our, in our remote classes to move students into those if we were going to make that change. So that's why we have to know this information soon. That's why we wanted to put the plan out Friday, because once we get information, we want to lay it out for parents, what's going to happen second semester, and then let them make the decision for their students, if they think that they should be in person, knowing that there is going to be a point, most likely, where we're back five days a week the second semester. And so they understand that, they know the situation, they know the potential class size, they know the metrics that it's going to, that it's going to take to have the kids go back. And if they're comfortable with that, then they choose to send their kids back five days. But as far as this group, what I, what I would just like to say, and I think the board has echoed this as well, is we want the teachers to be comfortable. We want them, you know, when we started this in August, even in the hybrid, everyone was nervous. You know, I mean, everyone was nervous when we came back to school. It's the same way with, with the elementary teachers. They were nervous. And we're going to be nervous whenever we make any change, when we move, if we upped 10% our students every day, it would be, it would be that way. But we will, we will have the discussions, and we will get the teachers comfortable with coming back if that's, if that's the way that the board ends up approving this plan. We do have a little bit of time. If there are additional PPE, is there additional scheduling, is there other places we can move kids to educate them that will make teachers feel more comfortable? Can we keep teachers distanced away, you know, from, is there a difference, you know, when there's 30 kids in the class? But that's something that, that we want to work through, again, with administrative teachers, and I would love to have a board member or two be a part of that, so you can, can be a part of, of that as well. There's not going to be a time, and I think this has been mentioned by a number of people, there's probably not going to be a time for years where there's zero risk of a student walking in with COVID, where there's zero risk. And so, you know, we weigh everything when we make these decisions. We weigh mental health, we, we may, of, of our students, of our staff, you know, we, we weigh grades, you know, we weigh safety, and those are all parts of it. And this isn't like it's, it's not a simple decision, obviously, of what we have to do move forward. But I just want to say that we're not going to bring the students back unless we feel that they're safe. We watch the data. We watch the data from other schools that are, have, you know, less social distancing than we do. We talk with the health department. We'll continue to talk with our teachers, with our administrators if this plan passes, knowing always that Madison County Health Department is always, I mean, it kind of had the final say, but that's, but we've got to have a plan in place so that parents know what they're, they need to do for the next semester. And so that's why this happened today. So, you know, our job is to educate students the best we can while keeping students and staff safe. So with that, I'll open it up. If there, if there are questions on this, I would be glad to, to take some. But that's what I need to say about the plan today.
Dr. Henderson, you talked about outbreaks. Outbreaks are more than just two students in a classroom on their own coming in and being sick. Isn't an outbreak showing a link between those two?
There is supposed to be a, a link between the two. And it's hard to tell when you're in a classroom, because if you happen to be in the same classroom, it's hard to show that that's not a link. And so for the most part, we've been counting links unless we're, you know, 100, really, really confident. We talk with the health department, and we use them as a guide as well. Sometimes we have to make the decision before. When we're in doubt, we are on the side of caution, and we quarantine if we have any doubts. But yes, you are correct.
Is there an opportunity or a chance that we can provide some of the data and do a dashboard, or is that not under consideration?
Yes. We, here, the plan that we've got for that is, as far as positive cases, that's something that we can provide. We do keep a weekly tally. It's not cumulative all the, the time. We're able to get cumulative numbers, but we know what we have at any current moment, because that's the big thing for us. At this moment, I'm not as worried about a case that happened in, back in August as I am what's in the schools right now. So we, we, we provide, been providing for any, any building where a parent might have a student. If there's a case, they get notice about it. And the, the principal provides an update of quarantine students verse, and also positive to those parents. But we, we have plans within the next month to put something on the website that just says, here's the buildings, and here's the positive cases that we have. And so that is not, that is something that we will do, so that people can get an idea of what it really is like in the case, or in the schools, the cases in the school.
I have two questions real quick. First, the first is a comment. There's a software called Infogram where you can, it's like a third party, but then that way, our, you know, already stressed IS staff doesn't have to create, you know, their own graphs and things like that. I believe it's something they can just pop in and then put the illustration on the dashboard. So it's called Infogram. And secondly, I have a question. I've been doing, I've been looking up, you know, obviously, metrics is a hot, a hot issue. And you may not know the answer to this, but I'm just, if you're aware, because I know you do speak to a lot of superintendents. From what I've seen, I was sent the Bethalto's return to learn updates that came out on the 23rd. They are coming, they are going back full-time. I do not see anything in this infographic about metrics at all. So are there school districts that literally do this without metrics at all?
There, they do have metrics, because I have spoken to the superintendents, but they're just not as part of the plan. Their, their metrics are more along the outbreaks and quarantine students.
Okay.
That's, that's what they're, but again, it's just not a part of, detailed part of the, of the plan. But they do, but behind the scenes, they have metrics.
Okay. And then interesting with Wentzville, which has been mentioned a lot, this is a quote from one of their infographics on the 15th of October, where I believe this is a superintendent speaking, if not, it's, it's a administrator that says, as I've been sharing publicly, there is no single data point that would, that we should be using to determine a shift from one level to another, rather multiple data points. And they list five different, really, you know, metrics, so to speak, but they're very subjective. So it's not, if anything, I think that the way they do it clouds up things more than, more than a definitive case, you know, outbreaks and things like that. So I was just.
There are no, yeah, the, to, there are no districts that have set metrics that are not revolve, involving their own cases that we know of in the St. Louis era. And I'm not saying in Missouri there's not, but definitely not Madison-St. Clair that are setting like cases per 100,000, or positivity rate, or anything like that as far as a metric in order to.
And I didn't see any in Highland either, but I'm sure they.
That's correct.
They have some. Okay.
Are there any other questions at this time? Are we ready for a motion? Do you?
I would like to bring up something, if I could, please.
Okay.
I have, I did sit down with the data all day Sunday. I mean, this has been a very difficult decision to make. And so, in, in terms of how we're going to vote, there is a responsibility for the health and welfare of not just students, but also staff. And for those that, who are, who are leaders in a district, you know, whether you're volunteering on a board or you're a hired position, that is the one thing you think about, the one thing that weighs in. And so in that, in that vein, I looked at the surveys, again, close to 3,000 responses from high school students, middle school, and high school parents, and remote learning parents that participated in those surveys. And the one data point that I've not heard come up tonight is that 61% of the 956 high school students said that they want remote or a hybrid model for second semester. I understand that we're hearing from, from parents that that percentage is much higher from their perspective. It's 60, 62, well, let's see, 68% of middle and high school parents want a full five days. And of those, 55 to 60% want it regardless of what Madison County Health Department metrics are. When we look at grade, 62% of the parents and, of high school students, and then middle and high school parents, and 69% of the remote families said that their students did just as well grade-wise, or better than they had last year. And I was hoping, I was begging for a mandate out of the data, you know, that it be 80/20. Even the teacher surveys are 50/50. So I, I am concerned walking into this that we don't have the mandate to make a definitive decision. We've talked about the fact that this is a hard decision to make. I just, what I'm seeing in the data is that there's two big issues. Number one, that the communicated expectations are not being met by everybody. You know, we even here have heard descriptions of great teachers and teachers that maybe aren't getting it quite done the way the parents are expecting it to be. Or that Zoom calls are supposed to be on Fridays that aren't happening. Some are. So that quality and that equity of instruction across the schools and across the district seems to be one of the big issues that we've heard over the last eight weeks and, and are reading in the data. Also, the students need additional supports, both academic and with mental health. Of that survey that went out, 5 to 11% of families are requesting additional mental health support for their families, or for their children. So I know that what we're about to vote on is a, is something that's in total. It wasn't broken into parts. And I think that's what's giving me great pause on what, on how to vote on this. Because I feel like some of the plan is good, but not all of the plan. And so we have to decide, do we, do we shortchange what we feel is, is not what it should be for the part that does work? And so I just want, I want to be on record to say that I wish this plan had been split, that, that we could vote on two parts of it rather than the whole. Okay.
And Jennifer, I'd like to speak. I, I agree with that. And I didn't write down statistics, but I did spend time this weekend speaking to people, friends of mine in other districts, as well as other states. And to answer the question, no, I'm not a parent of a student here in the Edwardsville School District. However, 39 years of my life was spent in education. I've been retired for six years. 34 of those years were spent at a high school, at two different high schools, and five years I did spend at the middle school. But I have spent time, and I'm here because I'm passionate, I'm a board member because I'm passionate for kids. I don't have any biological children, but however, after spending 39 years of my life with kids, other people's children, I have invested myself in, in being very passionate about students, their academics first, and their athletics and extracurriculum second. I've spoken to several people and been in contact with people from St. Louis Public Schools, Kirkwood, Rockwood, I have friends, Fort Zuma, someone mentioned Fort Zuma, Hazelwood, Ladoo, Highland, Collinsville, Alton, and I retired from Bethalto. So all of their plans and their metrics, that's all we've been talking about. Yesterday, I was on the phone, because I have family in Vegas, Texas, Tennessee, Michigan, I can't even read, Baltimore in Georgia, and we spent time talking about schools and what was going on. Most of those, the schools that I just mentioned in those states are on total remote. So I, I put a lot of time in with this. We've talked about it, and I do have my opinion, but I just wanted to let you know that even though I don't have children, that I do care about kids, and I care about the community. I've been here since I was 18. I am currently 67. I had the opportunity to move other places, but I enjoy the community, and I enjoy my workplaces. So I just wanted to share that, and I do have my opinion, and I agree with Jennifer, that I really feel that it should have been separated. I agree with the middle school possibly going back and trying it. The high school, I do not, I can't see putting 2,000 kids plus faculty and staff in the same building at the same time. I have a big problem with that. And I'm not thinking with my heart, and some people may know that my mother was the first person in Madison County to die of COVID after she was here visiting me. But I'm not thinking with that heart, because my mother was 86 years old. I'm thinking about the other children, and I'm thinking about the age of the faculty at the high school. I think there are almost 105 or 6 teachers between the age of 45 and 60. So I'm also thinking about them. I think at the middle school, I think it's about 80 that's between that age group. So we're just not throwing things out and trying to cause problems for anyone that, I'm certainly taking this to heart, because I've taken education to heart the most of my life. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of things I wanted to mention real quick. If this does pass, you know, I'm very happy, because I, I think it's been recommended a couple of times, that a committee is going to be formed consisting of teachers, EHS teachers, board members, and hopefully others, to determine how teachers and faculty staff, faculty and staff feel safer in the school. But from what I've heard tonight, there is also an overwhelming need for mental and emotional resources for this, these faculty and staff. I mean, it really breaks my heart to hear these stories. It's not often that we get to hear that side of, of their struggles. So I would really expect big things out of that group to really, I think they're, they're the key to, you know, their ideas and their participation, and their, their input is, is valuable as anything in this process. Secondly, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion that the district really, really needs a plan to get students and faculty and staff in full-time, whether it be on January 19th or March 19th, or August 19th of next year. We need to have a plan in place that shows what that looks like. Part of the, the committee I just mentioned is a huge component of that as far as their participation. And so, you know, obviously, if, if the numbers are in a place to where it is, it is, you know, quote unquote, appropriate to, to open at that time, then, then that's what will happen. And the last thing, you know, just that's on my mind is, you know, Dr. Henderson mentioned this earlier, he's had countless conversations with, you know, his administration and stakeholders in this. And, you know, we're at a point where tough decisions really have to be made in order to, you know, benefit our kids and our faculty and staff. But we may, we need to make sure that we do it in the safest way possible, because the, their safety of everybody in these schools is not lost upon me whatsoever. So that's just my thoughts on, on the topic.
Any other comments?
I would just like to echo John's sentiments. Like my fellow board members, I feel a weighty responsibility to all of our staff, students, and our community at large. I value the safety of our staff and students and, and the education of our children. I respect the decisions that are made by my fellow board members, and I recognize their expertise. I don't think you have to have a kid in this school to bring your expertise to this table and for it to be heard and valued. And I have a lot of respect for both you and Jennifer, because you are both educators. Lastly, I just want to say that I'm, I'm very thankful for our staff, administration, and teachers that work tirelessly in our school district.
Any other comments? Ready for recommendations?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2020-21 second semester transition plan as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion at this point? Carrie, please call the roll.
Dalariva. Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitts.
No.
Brumbeck.
No.
McDoll.
Yes.
Robertson.
Epstein.
Bertles.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm sorry?
Motion carries.
Okay. Our next item is announcements from the board, or are there any brief, brief announcements from any board members?
Yes, I, I just wanted, wanted to make a comment tonight. The comment overheard at the last board meeting is not a reflection of the board, the superintendent, the faculty, or the staff. We welcome all of those who come to participate in a board meeting. We value what you say, we listen to it, and we take it to heart so that we can proceed forward and change education.
Well said. With there's being no further business, may I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming.